Talking about reading, I applaud everything you do that are good, but you're not good when it comes to free speech. You don't even discuss what we're trying to bring up on your floor. So now we can't have a sign, right? Why don't, why don't you take and consider this kind of a sign here, okay? Why, why is it that you can't have a sign in a meeting? Why? 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 Is that sign, you know what that sign came for? Free speech, First Amendment, free expression. We want to know why you don't stop the pornography in your schools. Now, we want to know if the schools are safe. What kind of event does it take before you're going to allow discussion? Are you going to even talk about anything that might be disturbing to the public? Please, President Pearl, break down your wall of silence. Begin the topic that we want to hear. Why can't you say what is truthful?
Thank you for your comments tonight. Next person is Bill.
Offright, say it. Offright, offright. Yeah, Bill, offright.
Okay, offright, thanks.
You know, like, Bill, uprights.
So what they're passing out to you is a letter I sent to you guys via email. Just want to make sure you guys got a copy of it. So there's your physical copy. On February 12th, 2024, upon my removal from the board meeting, I used language that was unbecoming of a Christian. Thank God for mercy and repentance. Make sure you don't edit that. I owe the Clay Township Police Officers an apology for calling them pigs. Though I still believe you are tyrants, you were following orders. So I am deeply sorry for calling you pigs. Mr. Pearl, I called you a piece of crap. Not exactly that word, but I did. While I believe you earned that title, it was not very Christ-like of me. So I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Now to my next lesson. How many of you on the board truly know Jesus as your saint? Thankfully, I do. His loving grace is sufficient for me. You all should be familiar with John 3:16. Let me familiarize you with Romans 9, Romans 10, 9, and 10. Romans 10:9, "If you declare with your mouth Jesus as Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved." It's not only confessing with your mouth, folks, you have to actually believe in your heart. You all have heart. Verse 10, "For it is with your heart that you believe and are justified, and it is with your mouth that you profess your faith and are saved." Folks, it is with that same heart you do evil that can do good. It is not too late to turn from your wicked ways. The Bible also says in Isaiah 5:20, "Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who put darkness for light and light for darkness, who put bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter." Verse 21, "Woe to those who are wise in their own eyes and clever in their own sight." If God can save a wretched sinner like me, there's still time for all of you. God bless you. Not this time. I'd like to take a moment of silence and use up the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. It'd be easier if you released your real first name, at least. Next is Peter K.
Bill, upright.
Hello, Peter K. from Chippewa Township. Let's talk about Bible, Constitution, and education. U.S. Constitution was based on Bible, Bible. In the Declaration of Independence, we are reading about laws of nature, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unlevel rights. Both from Constitution of the State of Michigan, with the people of the State of Michigan grateful to Almighty God for the blessing of freedom and earnestly to secure this blessing and image to ourselves. When America was founded by Judeo-Christians, many parents took on test to educating the children. Today, parents warrior that government and public schools are stronghold for political correctness, secular humanism, openness, radical leftist indoctrination. Some school even looks like Marxist camps. Christian moms and dads believe public schools are becoming openly hostile to the values, beliefs, and doctrines expressed in the scripture. Here are some concerns. The presence of the LGBTQ++ and other sexual features in some public school libraries. The National School Board Association levy, parents expressing that these are school board meetings as a so-called domestic terrorist. Public education are already unwilling to give creation, science equal time with evolutionary theory. The influence of Planned Parenthood, the national leading abortion provider, and many public schools, according to their own website, Planned Parenthood is also the national leading sex education provider. The dumbing-down of culture and assumption that some subjects like advanced mathematics are steep in racism. So are you surprised that parents and members of the community are rising up and opposing? Instead of trying to find reasonable solution, members of this board are stone- warning, kicking the can, and even trying to censor speeches and freedom of expression. Christians' parents are actively informed about and actively involved in the children's education. No children's teachers and school administrator, no the curriculum being taught. Knowledge is power, and when the child's education is concerned, there is no bliss in ignorance. Because CBS boards start to look like Democratic Party censorship committee, it's time to remind few things. Where we have more and more, you can't say that. First amendment of the Constitution is guaranteeing freedom of speech, freedom of expression. It's the freedom of us to express ourselves. It's the right to speak, to be heard, to participate in the public artistic and social life. It's also including the right to seek, receive, and share information through the media. Thank you.
I just wanted to address the procedure for reconsideration for the books that are in our libraries here. For itself, from your website, despite the careful selection of library resources and the qualification of those involved in the selection process, objections to the library resources that are deemed offensive or inappropriate may occur. Any district parent, employer, student of the school district complaint may express an informal concern or formal request for reconsideration of a library resource. Chippewa Valley Schools is not a just body. Laws governing affinity, subversive materials, and other questionable matters are subject to interpretation by the court. No materials will knowingly be added to the library collection that have been previously determined to be in the compliance of law. It goes on. No material in question shall be removed from circulation until a final decision has been made. Once a complaint is made, procedures are as follows. They want to read this out for people who are not familiar with the situation and this procedure that we're talking about. Number one, any district, parent, employee, or student complaint wishing to challenge the placement of material in CBS School Library should be directed to the school's administration. Number two, complaint will be presented with a packet of materials, from how big it is or what, in which is going to include the district materials, media center mission statement, the selection policy, the deselection policy, the procedure for reconsideration, and the requests for the reconsideration of resources formed. Number three, the complaint will return the completed Chippewa Valley Schools request for reconsideration of school library resources, or the building principal. Books will be reviewed and in order received. The complaint must certify in the completed form that he or she has read the entire book, requires the film, timing, and content. Books that have been read will be received priority for review. Number four, building principal will notify the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Executive Director of Circum, and the Certified Laboratory Media Specialist. Number five, upon receiving the completed Chippewa Valley Schools request for reconsideration of school library resources formed, district administration will form a committee to reevaluate the material in question. Number six, the reconsideration committee will consist of the following members. One certified teacher administrator from the district, from a level where the reconsideration originally, a certified school library professional from the school district, a central office administrator, one parent legal guardian of students in the district from a level where the reconsideration is originated, and one of the high school students. In the event the student is unavailable to participate, the additional parent legal guardian of students will be in the committee. And it goes on. I'll have to come back and rediscover the rest of it the next time I get a chance, but it's just continuing.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Laura Paul.
My name is Delora Paul. I live in Chippewa Township. I live in the Chippewa Valley School District, and I want to express my very wonderful ideas about this school board. Thank you very much for all your courtesy and listening to the drivel. I don't know how you can stand it, and I'm sorry that you have to do that. But when I come to this school board, and when I see what's happening in this school district, I see nothing but wonderful, magnificent things. I see students who have opportunities. I see students who are glowing. I see all kinds of good things happening, and I want to thank you very much for the time and the efforts that you put into making this one of the best school districts in McComb County. Thank you very much.
Mark Hemmerly, McComb Township. Now a word from your Creator, from Romans 1:16-32. "Where I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes; for in it the righteousness of God is revealed, from faith to faith. As it is written, the righteous shall live by faith. For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who by their unrighteousness suppress the truth. For what can be known about God is plain to them, because God has shown it to them. For his invisible attributes, namely his eternal power and divine nature, have been clearly perceived ever since the creation of the world, and the things that he has made. So they are without excuse, for although they knew God, they did not honor him as God, or give thanks to him, but they became futile in their thinking, and their foolish hearts were darkened. Claiming to be wise, they became fools, in exchanging the glory of the immortal God for images resembling mortal man, and birds, and animals, and creeping things. Therefore God gave them up, in the lust of their hearts, to impurity, to the dishonoring of their bodies amongst themselves. Because they exchanged the truth about God for a lie, and they worshiped and served the creature rather than the Creator, who is blessed forever. Amen. For this reason God gave them up to dishonorable passions. For their women exchanged natural relations for those that are contrary to nature, and the men likewise gave up natural relations with women, and were consumed with passion for one another, men committing shameless acts with men, and receiving in themselves the due penalty for their error. And since they did not see fit to acknowledge God, God gave them up to a debased mind, to do what ought not to be done. They were filled with all manner of unrighteousness, evil, covetousness, and malice. They are full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, maliciousness. They are gossip, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, haughty, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedient to parents, foolish, faithless, heartless, and ruthless." This is, this is from your Creator. He's the one who made all of us in this room, and that's His word.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Amelia.
I'm going first. Make sure you get good footage. I'd like to address some blatant hypocrisy and gaslighting from the last meeting. Mr. King was desperate to blame conservatives in this room for things he, his wife, and her group, and this board are guilty of. At the last meeting, I exposed a Facebook page involving Mrs. King and her group here. I quoted some of the vitriol the group posted, including Mrs. King calling the people here who don't align with her beliefs as disgustingly hateful. Rather than admonish his wife and her group for their hateful rhetoric, he blamed those they attacked. In part, Mr. King said, quote, "I would hope it would be in a respectful manner, but often it turns negative towards LGBT+ individuals. People have jeering comments, slurs, or jokes about them that are inappropriate. That's wrong and shameful. I don't think we should tolerate hate. My wife doesn't believe in your viewpoint because of the hate and negativity. I don't believe in it either," unquote. Mr. King, we can agree hate shouldn't be tolerated. So why are you tolerating it from your own wife and her group? Our side isn't going on social media to mock people attending these meetings, nor are we mocking LGBT kids. In fact, our side defended the child your LGBT group openly mocks at these meetings and online. Mr. King made another comment I'd like to address, quote, "A number of you are spending your energy on manufactured issues that are seeking to take away things from the district. Use your efforts to help rather than for manufactured propaganda to try to stifle things," unquote. Exactly what manufactured issues and propaganda were you referring to, Mr. King? Is it the board's refusal to follow state and federal laws? Maybe it's the low proficiency scores or high salaries you're labeling as propaganda? Or is it the nefarious money trails and irresponsible spending that are manufactured issues for you? Mr. King, apparently the facts we're speaking about here aren't helpful to you. Rather than blaming us for what your wife and your wife's group are guilty of, focus on bringing up this district's proficiency scores. Stop exposing kids to sexually graphic material. Do a full forensic audit of this district's spending. Stop condemning the people here who demand better education for kids. Those would all be very helpful actions. I'm going to end with a quote from the Black economist and philosopher Thomas Sowell, quote, "Anyone who studies the history of ideas should notice how much more often people on the political left, more so than others, denigrate and demonize those who disagree with them instead of answering their arguments," unquote. Yes, the left only tolerates speech they agree with.
Last speaker is Amelia.
I'm going to tell you a story, and I want everyone to listen closely. Imagine a young teenage girl who attends public school. She has her own style of beliefs, but because they aren't the norm, she's bullied daily by others, especially boys. She's called vile names, slammed into lockers, cursed at, pushed on the bus, and threatened. The girl just wants to be accepted without judgment. She asks the school counselor for help, but instead is shown a chart and told she is not being bullied, and it's just boys being rude and annoying. The girl speaks her concerns at a school board meeting, but the board does nothing. The bullying continues. The girl endures it because of what the counselor was told. Some teachers push their ideologies and curriculum that attacks and diminishes the girl's lifestyle and beliefs. She speaks about it at the school board meeting. The next day, the girl is summoned to the principal's office and told everything the teachers say is correct. She's shamed and told to bring her concerns to her counselor and not to a school board meeting. The girl remembers her previous experiences with the counselor. Finally, the girl's parents remove her from the school, and she's enrolled at a campus where she's accepted without judgment and gains amazing confidence. She wants to advocate for students like herself and speaks at more school board meetings. The board doesn't like what she says and repeatedly tries to intimidate and silence her. She's mocked on social media by a school board member's wife. When the girl speaks about it at the school board meeting, the board members walk out. The wife and the wife's group cheer. The board members, the board member defends his wife's mocking of the girl. The wife's group mocks the girl during the meeting, and the board members allow it. Eventually, the wife and her group create many social media posts mocking and publicly shaming the girl and her mom. The board member's wife calls them disgustingly hateful. Others in the group agree and want to ban the girl and her mom from the meetings. The school board defends the wife and her group and claim it's the girl who is part of a hate group. The girl sees and hears all of this. Imagine how that young girl feels being humiliated for her beliefs. Imagine how she feels reading those posts online that mock her and others who believe as she does. Picture that girl standing here while adults bully and shame her. Now, imagine that girl is transgender. Is the behavior of the school board and those who mock the girl still acceptable?
Couple of, couple of notes here. Fantastic week here for Chippewa Valley. Our basketball team did fantastic last week. Pride of, had a great opportunity to go out to Fox Elementary to Kim Sardello's second grade, which was fantastic, and I really appreciate the opportunity to go out and connect with the students. We have Science Olympiad here throughout the district on Saturday. So that was great to be able to see everyone mix with their families, be able to compete, and to see all the smiling faces of everyone who participated, how much learning went on, and all the work and effort that was put forth. So that was just really, really great. And then earlier in the week, we had a M A S B meeting that I attended, and a couple of individuals come in as well, and be able to see a number of individuals throughout the district highlighted, and some of our students were there as well. So it's just all around, just a fantastic opportunity and great articulation show of all the hard work and effort that our administrations, district, our families, and our students put forth. So really proud of that. Just lastly, I'll just say this again, just an odd, odd fascination with either myself, my wife, just my overall family. I don't know if we flattered or to get out of PPO or whatever, but. Excuse me. So, so at the end of the day, just appreciate all the adoration and attention that all of you give, but that has not changed the amount of effort that I put in school board for this district and the appreciation that I have with this administration, the teachers, all our support staff, and families and students that are a part of it. So I guess keep the attention coming, and I'll just keep continuing to work, and everyone else will continue to keep working, and we'll continue to have great results. So appreciate it.
We'll get your attention.
Yeah, I'd say, you're right, we did have the Science Olympiad for the district this past Saturday. It was awesome. If anybody ever has a chance, stop by. These kids, they love it, and it's always a benefit just for them showing up. They don't even have to win anything. Obviously, it makes it better if they win. But I mean, they just, they really enjoy the day. They have a lot going on. It's really exciting. So if anybody ever gets a chance, just stop in and take a look at these kids on these days. I believe the middle school Science Olympias coming up, and also the elementary and middle school Lego Robotics Days are coming up tournaments. So those are, are a couple more coming up if anybody wants to take a look at that.
Anyone else?
No, I'd like to thank all the people that are here this evening, and I want to say that I'm very proud of the opportunity that the young female athletes had, because many of those qualities that they were able to be exposed to are qualities that take them lead into the world of work. And I also would like to, I think, the Twain Taylor, the flame Joe, yeah, she was amazing also, and I just feel that I have a lot of pride in our school district, and I have for many years. And I also enjoy spending time in the classroom with the students every year. Looking forward to work that. And the Science Olympiad was such fun, and I'd like to thank Rich Luterman from Fox Leather that came and gave out the awards. He was very positive and said he enjoyed doing it immensely. So that's it. Thank you.
Our coaches and advisors were terrific the last few days. Congratulations to the Chippewa Valley men's basketball team from winning the district. That was a great game. We attended, and obviously the Olympics will break. Science Olympia was a great event. Went out at 8:30 in the morning. I think it ended at 9:40. The parents were really worked hard with their kids. The kids had a great time competing, and really opened up their eyes, I think, to science and technology and things that could inhabit in this world. Also, congratulations to the Combs County spelling bee champion. She was from. Hope to bring her here and recognize her. And Dakota's doing great things too. Obviously, you saw, so thank you, everybody, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So thank you, everybody, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll support all of the favorites we said by saying hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.